Please stand and join me with pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Our Father, which art in heaven, Creator of heaven and earth, Lord, we thank you for the day and the blessings of this day. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom and strength for our leaders as they make decisions on our city and all the events that are ahead in this meeting tonight. Blessed be the name of the Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of December 3rd. Second item on the agenda is public comments and announcements, recognitions. Evelyn Nephews would like to say a couple words.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
To the mayor, City Council, and to our audience here and the listening audience, I would like to be here tonight just to say thank you. I will be putting a listing of volunteers in both our newspapers, the Guthrie News Leader and the Logan County Curia for the Benefit Musical and our Thanksgiving Dinner. But tonight, I just wanted to say thank you to all who cared. We had repeaters and first-time volunteers. Pastor Bill Williams gave the prayer, and of course, our mayor brought his wife, and he also brought the welcome and encouraged those present to be thankful. Our Guthrie Job Corps students and others, they came in large numbers, and they heard the mayor. And so they in turn challenged him and gave gratitude for the sinner, for the teachers, the students, and the food. We warmed hearts, bodies, and souls of well over 800 friends and family. And for this, we are thankful. Pastor Hammond, of course, he organized his impromptu choir and had them singing. But he was very touching on some of the things, the last thing that we talked about that evening. We always call each other and try to figure out, how do we do? And in one of his statements, he says, you know, I'm tired. I mean, sometime I'm a little broke down. He says, but I'm so thankful. He went to deliver a meal to one of our guests at a service station. And when he brought it, she was so surprised, and she said, oh, I didn't know we still had people like this in Guthrie. So go and tell them that we are thankful, that I'm very thankful, and to keep on doing it. So we'll see you in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number three is our consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of November 19th. And B is the approval of the schedule of regular meetings for the 2019 calendar year. Should be 20, shouldn't it?
Yes.
I amend that to the 2020 calendar year. Sorry.
I was gonna say, so moved with the 2020 correction.
Thank you. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present for the two consent agenda items with that amendment. Item number four, we've already discussed, so I'll move on to item number five. Discussion and possible action to concur with the city, Guthrie City Council adopting Ordinance Number 3323, reflecting changes to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund. Kristin, are you handling this? Very good. You want to introduce yourself to the group as one of the newer staff people here.
My name's Kristin Elsenbeck. I'm the Human Resources Director. Relatively new to the city, started in May, and am really enjoying my time in this role, so, thank you. So the agenda that we're talking about is the OKMRF Plan. This is specifically the Divine Benefit Plan. So periodically, the IRS partners with OMRF, and they review the retirement plan. And as a result of the review, there's going to be several changes. So the primary change really was just, there was a clause in the master plan that stated that if there was misuse of funds or fraud or something like that during employment, that we could essentially take it to council and deny the insurance benefit to the recipient. The main change with the change in the master plan is it takes that clause out, and it puts that responsibility back on the state statute that essentially does the same thing. There were some other changes, too, that, there was about a two-page document of all the changes in the master plan and the JONDER agreement that was primarily like cleaning up language and things like that. Nothing really changed to the core, like, administration of the day-to-day
Or benefit.
Benefit of the plan, yeah.
So this is what all municipalities that are involved in Oklahoma with this retirement plan.
It is, yeah.
They are all signing.
Yep, yep.
All right.
So it takes the liability off of Guthrie and puts it on the state is the bottom line with the end user, right?
Yeah, essentially, it does. But really, I mean, ultimately, it does the same thing. The IRS just said, this is an inappropriate statement to be in this plan. It really is already a state statute, so we need to rely on the state statute.
There you go.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion then to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to adopt Ordinance Number 3323, reflecting changes in the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund. That being the last item on our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting. We are adjourned, and I call to order our City Council Meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd. Item number two is consent agenda items A, B, C. A, B, C. A being the approval of the minutes of special City Council Workshop of November 5th. B is the approval of the minutes of our City Council Meeting of November 19th. And C is to confirm the schedule of regular meetings for the 2020, got that right this time, calendar year.
Still moved.
A motion and a second. Okay, any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present for the three consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three, discussion, possible action to accept the resignation of Vice Mayor Gaylord Z. Thomas, Ward III Council Member.
Where'd you go?
Whoa, wait a minute. Where you at?
You dropped. Go to the revised agenda.
Oh.
Gotta go back to the revised agenda. Here it's right there.
There we go.
There's only one revision, and it's that.
Sorry, Steve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, I'll start over.
Okay.
Discussion, possible action to accept the resignation of Vice Mayor Gaylord Z. Thomas, Ward III Council Member, and the process to fill vacant position for the balance of his term through May 3rd of 2021. We, I received a letter, which I've shared with all of you, from Z. State identifying his request to resign. And we need to formally accept that resignation today. So let me take that as one. I'll entertain a motion then to formally accept.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Don't we need to discuss the process before the motion?
I'm gonna get back there. So we have a motion to formally accept. Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then to accept the resignation of Gaylord Z. Thomas, Ward III Vice Mayor. Now, talk about the process to fill the vacancy. In the past, two filling of resignations, it has been the mayor, vice mayor, and the other person from the ward in question. And that's how we've done it the last two times. Do we want to continue that process? Do we want to talk about a different process? It's, the board is open for your discussion.
So I brought up a process to the mayor of looking at something that's a little more equitable, fair, random maybe more so.
I like that word.
Moving forward so that other councils may look back and say, okay, well, there's a process we can get around. And that is to take the existing council members that are left, because there may be two people that resign. You don't know. But in this case, it's one, so all six names go in a hat. City clerk pulls three names out of the hat. An advertisement goes out advertising a position. Those three names are the ones that interview those people and bring the candidate forward to the rest of council to approve. That was.
I like that idea.
And that gives it to everybody. The difference in the old program is that there's, if we need to go there, I will, real quick, is that you have a mayor, and then you have a handpicked vice mayor. So you've got two people automatically that have a no or a yes vote right up front. Okay?
I don't think that that's correct.
And it may not be correct, but it's a potential.
What's the charter saying? Before, and I know what you're saying, Brian.
The charter says four council people shall.
It doesn't address the process. It says that there must be a vote of four to appoint the person in place of the individual that has resigned. Doesn't talk about the process for how that happens. I was just saying the process that we followed the last two times. But there, it's open for us to discuss what we want. Brian's put a suggestion for, put everybody, all the six remaining, in this case, six remaining, people in a hat, and then those are drawn, and they become the nominating, they interview all of the candidates and become the nominating then committee to this body. It still takes four votes from this body to make that happen.
But that committee ought to be looked at pretty strongly because they did spend their time in going through the applicants and brought whatever that candidate is forward.
Sure.
One thing that I do like about the process we've got right now is I'm not retired. I could, it's gonna be a heck of a time for me to find the time to do interviews with people, set aside time to do that.
Then if your name is pulled, just kindly decline and let them pull another one.
Well, and that's possible, too. I don't think that should be.
Yeah, don't put your name in the hat.
Remember that most of this stuff is going to be based around the three people's schedule. The interviews would be set up around the three people's schedule.
Well, what I was saying, the thing I like about the process we've got now is that Steve has time to do that, and I don't. So that's why I like it. But I understand what you're saying. I actually agree with what you're trying to do. So.
What can I say, Lucy?
We appreciate your dedication to the city, Steve.
I know what you're.
That may have sounded bad.
We all knew what you meant. I think.
Hopefully.
Okay, so there's an idea. Anybody else have any other thoughts about how we want to do this this time?
I think he's come up with as fair of an even playing field as anybody. And I would be up for making a motion that that's the way we do this process.
I'd be up for seconding that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
It's not even an agenda item. I don't even know why we're voting.
Well, the process.
The process is.
On number three.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes then. See the votes. Okay, unanimous for all those present to have a process whereby the six remaining members of the councils' names are put into a hat and handled by the city clerk. Three names are drawn out, and those become the nominating.
And I would respectfully suggest that if someone does not feel like they have time to dedicate to that, is just simply don't have your name put in the hat. You don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, the only thing in the process that we didn't confirm was the timeframe of an advertisement that would go out there. Being that it's the holidays, you would probably want it to go out there, and that could be discussed later, I guess. You'd want it to go out there and.
You mean when we're advertising the vacancy?
Yes, sir.
I think that almost goes immediately as soon as we.
No, I know, but the timeframe of that, in other words, is it two weeks? Is it 30 days? What is it? Because two weeks puts it right at Christmas.
In the past, do you recall what we have done? I thought it was two or three weeks.
It was two or three weeks, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Two or three weeks for the applications to all be, and then the interview process followed that.
Well, you can work on, you can do the logistics of that.
And then the committee has to decide whether we have enough people to make a decision on, or?
No, if there's nobody, there's nobody.
I know, but if you've got three people two weeks in, then we're good, right?
Whatever. We come up, if we come up with a three-week timeframe, yeah.
There's a deadline, and unless there's zero, it wouldn't be extended beyond that.
All right, I'm done.
Yes, sir.
The way we normally word it is we leave it open until the position's filled, but the first review has a target date. So if you want to make sure that your application's in time, you got to get it in before that first review. But it remains open. If you don't have enough applicants that you're comfortable, you can always wait because it remains open.
And I'd point out, the vacancy can be filled at the next regular meeting or as soon as thereafter is practical, so there is leeway on how that's done.
All right, all right, good. All right, item number four. Discussion of the Land and Water Conservation Fund Mineral Wells Park Improvement Project and Guthrie Bid Number 2019-96. We had a, obviously, significant part of the workshop addressed those same issues. Staff comments?
To go through the engineer's recommendations so that we're all clear. The bid for the asphalt paving under the park project, you will be rejecting that. The paving of the parking area was awarded to Atlas Paving a couple meetings ago. But we will work with that contractor. You all probably can't see the arrow without, but this long stretch of parking, we will take in the recommendations that we have from HPC and others and look at providing some green space here. Whether we take all of this stretch out or not, we'll look at that. But whatever we take out here, we'll look at maybe putting here or putting over here.
The blue.
In the blue. So tonight, you would reject the bid for the paving, asphalt paving. The sidewalks, it's my understanding that the ADA accessible sidewalks connecting with the change order, reducing the amount of sidewalks was agreeable to HPC. And the city engineer is recommending awarding the sidewalk Section C to C4L Construction of Edmond in the amount of $111,854.80 with a concurrent deductive change order in the amount of $35,447.45 to take the quantities out of the sidewalks we deleted. So the contract amount would then be adjusted to $76,407.35.
Great, I'm lost.
The next one on the splash pad, this is the engineer's recommendation I'm reading from. The next one is a splash pad, and this would be award Section D Splash Pad to Cimarron Valley Construction in the amount of $324,543.80. The other item would be to award the playground equipment and the pour-in-place surface, and that would be awarded to Cimarron Valley Construction in the amount of $264,741.27. And we would reject the bids on the gazebos because we think there is a more cost-effective way to do that. And that would be to, they come in kits, and that would be for the city to put the concrete base down, and then we would put the kits together. So we would reject that bid. So that's the recommendation before you from the project engineer.
Okay. Questions from council?
I don't really have a question, but I think we, if we do this, we need to tie Joe's, some of his advice on the parking and stuff into this.
I agree.
Where, when he works, when we go to do the paving and all, if we're gonna do away with some of that on the east side, one of the things he said, we might be able to put some over there off of the southwest corner, and maybe some of it back at the north end. I don't really know how to do that as far as, I'm not saying, you know, Joe's the ultimate word, but I want him tied in, I think, for some of this advice that he gave. I think he had some good ideas as far as moving some of that stuff around.
How do we do that? Okay.
You mean pro bono Joe?
Yeah.
Pro bono Joe.
Yeah, not the paid Joe.
We'll buy Joe lunch for that. Joe will get a lunch or something out of the deal.
Okay, all right, good. Any other comments from council? There are a number of individuals that asked to speak. And some of you, I think just about everybody spoke before, but I want to give you a chance. Joe Coffin, okay. Aaron Brown? Okay. Linda Ozan? Linda, you okay? You didn't really speak before. Okay, good to see you here.
Steve?
Yes.
Go ahead, do your thing.
Okay, Joe Chapel? Okay, that's all of the individuals then that signed up to speak on this particular issue. Jim?
My only comment on this is I'm still, I don't know what we're doing. I don't. I don't think anybody in here does. What we're trying to do is approve, we're gonna do something at the park. That's what we're approving because there's nothing solid. We don't, you know what I mean? And I'm not trying to be insulting at all, Leroy. I'm sorry.
You want to walk it through it again?
Well, I'm just saying that there's a lot of stuff that's still not finalized. We still don't know what we're gonna do with the money we're approving.
From what I heard, the only thing that's changed is the flexibility of the parking on the east side. The gazebos, award the gazebos and award the sidewalks.
See?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Reject, reject the gazebos.
It's just really confusing, is all I'm saying. That's a lot of money to throw at something that's really confusing. That's all I'm saying.
Let me try to do it again. What we're doing is approving the contract for the splash pad. And HPC has concurred with that project or that portion of the project. So we're awarding the splash pad, and those are the features that will be on the splash pad, and it's located right there.
Right there.
Okay. We are awarding the bid for the playground, and that's what the playground features will look like. That's the layout, and that goes right there. We're, I'm sorry.
Back up to the splash pad, just so there's clarity. That's being awarded to Cimarron Valley Construction at $324,000, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the playground is being awarded to Cimarron Valley as well for $264,741.27. The connecting pass, the ADA connecting pass that connect this gazebo, the splash pad, this parking, and goes around this parking and connects these features. We will be, once we work with all of the parties on the parking, there may be a change order to this award. Depending on if we move this up here, then the length of the sidewalk in front of that may change, and some of it over here. So we're awarding the sidewalk, but depending on what we do with the parking, there may be a change order coming to that one.
And that's the one that's going to the C4L Construction of Edmond?
Yes.
For $76,000 and $35,000 and $111,000 respectively.
We are rejecting the bid for the gazebos at the present time because we're going to explore a different option on how to do that phase of the project. And we are rejecting the bid to pave the parking spots because we already accepted. We saved roughly $100,000 by rolling it into the CIP bid. We've already accepted that, but once we get with landscape architect, free Joe or whatever you, term you come up with.
Pro bono.
Pro bono.
And the architect, when we make those adjustments, then we'll do a change order to that contract if need be.
So that's what we're doing.
Is that helpful?
Okay, yep. Okay, any questions from council?
I'm gonna move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah. We have a person that's missing. I think we need to let that person be involved in this as well. Now, it's not against you, Leroy, or anybody else, but I think we need to have somebody in here. We need to have a seventh person to vote.
That might not be for a month.
And we've got a motion and a second already, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I would point out, if you do that, these bids are only good through December 9th. We would have to rebid the whole process.
Okay, so we're, we have a motion and a second to award the sidewalks, the playground, and the splash pad, and rejecting the parking and the gazebos, to summarize. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. By a four to two vote, we are approving to move forward with the paving, I'm sorry, with the splash pad, with the playground, and with the sidewalk. And we rejected the bids on the parking and the gazebo. Item number five, discussion, possible action to adopt Ordinance Number 33323, amending the employee retirement. We talked about that in the previous meeting. Anything else that the council wants to ask Kristin or anybody else? And I'll entertain a motion then?
Still moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. We have, we have Ghentling voting twice. I'm voting yes. So unanimous approval to move forward with Ordinance Number 3323, amending the employee retirement system. Item number six, discussion, possible action to adopt Ordinance Number 3325 to rezone a property located on East Springer. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As was just indicated, this is a rezone for a property that's on East Springer. It's between Cypress and Pine Street. It would be just east of the Guthrie Housing Authority, housing development over there. It's a, currently an R1 zone property. They're looking to rezone it to R2. It's about 10,000, well, 10,500 square feet. They're wanting to build a duplex on it. That's why they're wanting to rezone it to R2. Even though it can't be conditioned to only a duplex, given the lot size and that, the likelihood of getting any more density than a duplex is probably unlikely. The comprehensive plan does designate it as a medium-density residential, so with the duplex-type use and that, it would fit within the land use category of our comprehensive plan. And finally, there are other R2 properties around there, and as I indicated, a large multifamily development to the east. At the November 14th Planning Commission Meeting, they recommended approval, 5-0.
Okay. Questions from council?
Do you know what they're gonna build there yet?
A duplex. Yeah, they're looking to build just a duplex. The what? I'm sorry.
Is that, that all it will be?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And obviously, with an R1, you can only have one dwelling unit, so they would need the R2 to have the two dwelling units.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt Ordinance Number 3325, rezoning of this property. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. We have one absent that would.
He recused himself.
Okay. Oh, he recused himself. I'm sorry. So we have a vote of five that we approve Ordinance Number 3325, rezoning of that property. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to request special use permit to allow for antique store in the R2. for antique store, uh, in the R2, um, to, to R2 located at West Noble. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, yeah, and I give you an updated site plan, uh, that's there that, uh, you can use that for reference. As you just, uh, introduced, it is a special use permit, uh, for an R2 property to have an antique store. And by our code, that obviously isn't allowed to use through the special use permit process. The property's at the northeast corner of Noble, uh, and 13th. It's the former Guthrie Fire Station, so I'm sure most of you are probably familiar with that. One of the, probably the biggest issue that came up during the planning commission and even when staff did their staff report was the parking issue. Initially, they were looking for 700 square feet of retail area. They've reduced it to 650 square feet. The original proposal required five spaces. Because of the code, the spaces cannot be put in the front on the driveway. They would have to be off-site of the right-of-way somewhere else, which would, in this case, be in the rear yard. He didn't have enough space, so by dropping it to 650 square feet, it took the decimal that carried it to, uh, five spaces and brought it down to four spaces, which there is now adequate room or should be adequate room to, uh, put the spaces. So based on that, the planning commission had recommended approval of the, uh, special use permit for an antique store for 650 square feet of retail area, and that was a 5-0 vote. And if you have any questions for me?
Questions by council? I guess I have a little bit of a concern when we've got that driveway coming right back, right onto Noble, cars probably backing out onto Noble from that. I mean, unless I'm, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, yeah, that could happen. That's not part of the required parking. The required parking will be in the back off the alley. There is an existing driveway, uh, in that, but again, the required parking they'll have to put in is the four spaces in the back off the alley. Now, to say that somebody can't come and pull in the driveway and utilize it, it's probably no different than, you know, residential home, but that is not part of the required parking. That is being provided in the rear.
That's not part of the issue here.
Right.
Was it discussed in the planning, or, yeah, the planning meeting in regards to, I know that there was a lot of issues this last summer with the lawnmower shop also being on Noble, so neighbors had problems with that. Are neighbors gonna have problems with this?
No, cause, I mean, first of all, with the lawnmower situation, that was, you know, in an R1 in a single-family area, that was kind of a mid-block type situation. This one, given that it's on a corner lot and it is on Noble, which, you know, traffic in, in the small amount of retail, it would not appear that it would have a negative impact to the area or cause some impact to the area. But obviously, you know, it is, would be more of a commercial use.
And under this special use permit, the goods have to be inside, not outside.
Yeah. 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 But given the, the small area that there is, the applicant did indicate that he was, and he is here tonight, uh, that he was gonna have a limited hours or days. He wasn't gonna be open every day and that. If there is concern by the council that, you know, it could have an impact through the special use permit, they could limit the number of days of operation or even hours of operation through the, uh, special use permit process.
So there was no opposition to this?
There were two gentlemen that showed up at the planning commission meeting that lived adjacent to the rear on the alley there, that had concerns about, uh, it being a commercial use and that it may impact the neighborhood. Outside of that, there was not any other written objection or anything, but there were two that showed up at the, uh, planning commission meeting.
Now, do we take, uh, do we send out a notification to the neighborhood?
Yes, all property owners within a 300-foot radius.
Did anybody respond to that?
No, no. Like I said, there were two that got the notice that showed up at the planning commission meeting, but there was no other correspondence or phone calls.
I'm making motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. By a vote of five to one, we approve the request for special use permit, uh, at, uh, 1324 West Noble. Item number eight, discussion, possible action to approve purchase of a new one-ton, four-wheel crew cab. Danny?
Staff chose to remove this item back in July, um, meeting. Due to current time, the vendors at that time on the state contract was right in the middle of updating their quotes on the, and we wasn't really able to get, uh, a good set quote from all the vendors. At that time, the price was averaging right around the 30,786 is what we were able to get. We just wasn't able to get enough off of the state contract. And again, we were discussing at that time, uh, the possibility of a 5% doing something like that to buy within, uh, locally. Nothing has changed with that process. Staff has currently acquired, uh, three quotes through state contract. One from Carter Chevrolet at 34,697, one from Bill Knight Ford at 35,400, and one from John Vance, uh, Country Ford for 36,419. What we'd be looking at doing is replacing a 2000 model one-ton Dodge dump bed. It's a standard transmission. It currently has roughly 137,000 on it. It has had the transmission, um, replaced in it once and the rear end, we had to have a specialist come in and weld up the rear end, cause it was no longer holding seals. What we would be doing is with the mileage on this unit and the, the use of this unit having the dump bed, we'd probably look, well, we would look at relocating, not retiring this unit, but relocating it to a different department to where it would cut the use down on this vehicle and then retire a older unit, uh, that's like a 94 Chevy that is at the convenience center to, to take some of the use off of it.
How much was John Vance's bid?
John Vance on state contract was 36,419.
Okay. Other, any other questions of, uh, of Danny from council?
Do we have to take Lois' bid? We do?
Yeah, we do.
Have we?
Based with our current purchasing procedures and ordinance, yes, we do. We have looked at modifying those to give us some flexibility to buy local, uh, but we have not amended those yet. But we would like to in the future where we do have some leeway, uh, to, uh, within a certain range, buy local. But we have not adopted that ordinance yet.
I will say this, we did reach out to our other local vendor and they was not able to provide us with a quote that was compatible to state contract. They don't have nothing on state contract either.
Okay. All right. Good.
I'm making motion, accept it as is.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval by all those present to move forward with the purchase of a new one-ton, one-ton, four-wheel drive. Item number nine, discussion, possible action to accept the 2019, should that be 20?
Yes.
Violence Against Women Act, um, grant.
It's for the 2021 years, but it's a 19 grant.
Oh, it's a 19 grant for 20 and 21. Okay. Chief?
If, if we choose to accept this award, it will be our fourth and fifth year. It's a two-year award, uh, of having the grant. This enables us to employ one investigator that specifically spends his time on domestic violence, uh, sexual assault crimes, stalking, dating violence. This is the first time that we haven't been awarded 100% of his salary and benefits. Over the course of the two-year period, the grant is paying 93.78%, and we're gonna pay 6.22.
Okay. And we're kinda been leading the parade in terms of this, uh, this program in the state, right?
Yes.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with that, uh, with that grant. Congratulations, chief. Item number 10, city manager report.
I have no additional report tonight.
Okay. Item number 11, comments from members of the city council. Mr. Case?
I didn't get a chance to make it to the tree lighting a couple days ago. I hope everything went well with that, I guess.
Excellent.
Fantastic. That's all I had.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. I appreciate all y'all's hard work. I know some of you spent a few hours up here. I know Leroy's up there a lot of times late at night, so I appreciate all y'all's hard work. I didn't make it either, but I understand there was quite a crowd here and so that was good. And was, we saw something on TV, it had, uh, about Guthrie as well. So, uh, anyway, uh, thank you for what you all do.
Councilman Long?
No comments.
Councilman Channel?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilman Bathory?
Nope. I've used my allotted time.
Your, your 30 words.
That was questionable. Again, congratulations on another, another successful Thanksgiving, uh, General Daniel's Thanksgiving. I don't know what the total number of, of meals that were served, but it was, it was a huge number, uh, and lots of volunteer.
Over 800.
Over 800 meals served, uh, at the American Legion as well as delivered, and I think also some went to the jail. So it was, that's a great thing. And again, congratulations for opening night, uh, a great start, uh, for our festivities on Territorial Christmas here in Guthrie, America. Okay, item number 12, consider approval to convene into executive session, uh, for purposes of discussing, uh, negotiations with the fraternal order police.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second.